So go back up a little bit. There we go, oh, I missed it. Right there. Okay, now, so this one, three, has to do with learning goals. The teacher understands procedures for designing effective coherent instruction and the instruction of learning goals and our learning goals have to be able to be assessed. If you can't assess them, then it's if you can't measure it, then you can't gauge whether it's getting better, worse, if it can't be measured. So everything we do is measurable and all of our learning goals come from the teaks. So if it's, you know, science, then the learning goals are going to come from those teaks. Like maybe they have to learn the process of, you know, plant life in the way that it grows. That that's part of their their teaks. But there's a lot going into how we build from just that objective. So the objective could be that the students will understand the life cycle of a plant, something like that. Or the the growth cycle of a plant. And then from that one idea, them understanding it, we have to come up with all of these activities, all of these assessments, and then all of the supporting strategies that will help them understand these concepts. And so that's what this competency is about. If you go down a little bit more. So the first one, A, if you go back up just a bit. Okay, A was what I was talking about utilizing the teak. So what is your your content area?
It's health science.
Okay, so perfect. So for health science, I know one of your teaks, oh my god, health science is the craziest, most all encompassing type. You guys discuss everywhere from root words, prefixes to the societal impacts of like research and healthcare and lack of healthcare. It's just like this huge scope that you have to know anatomy and physiology. So it's a lot. One of your teaks. And depending on what age group the student is is in the scenario, then that sort of dictates what activities we could do, right? Because younger kids and older kids, they think differently, right? With health science in particular, it's it's what, six through 12?
Yes.
Okay, so six to 12. So six is at the beginning of middle age. You have early child, the EC, then you have the the middle age, and then you have the adolescent, late adolescent, the preadults. And the way that their brains work and the way in which we teach them, the kinds of questions we ask, the types of activities we engage in are chosen based on their their cognitive ability, their, you know, physical abilities, where they are developmentally. And so this competency is about your understanding that we from the teaks is where all of our learning goals come from. That's how significant it's asking you to understand the significance of the teaks as a prerequisite knowledge of skill for instructional goals. And of course, it's a prerequisite. It literally is where we come up with our objectives. Sometimes teachers will use just that objective, but but it won't be enough. You have to, there are certain skills that are necessary in order for that objective to take place. So we'll say, you know, the students must be able to public speak for five minutes if that's going to lead to somewhere else. So they are the prerequisites. They're incredibly important with respect to those in the traditional education program and with with respect to those in special ed as well. So the IEP should, the goals of the IEP should directly reflect the teaks because those are the main goals and objectives. Therefore, that's where all appropriate learning goals and objectives. And that's just what I was talking about. So it's about appropriate, it's clear for the student, it's relevant to what they're learning, it's significant, it's age appropriate. And that doesn't just mean like maturity wise. It means age appropriate developmentally, you know, can they do this? We know that early children cannot think abstractly. And that's just because their brain has not yet yet made all those different neural pathways and they haven't built up experience, built up prior knowledge enough to be able to abstract or imagine things based on just a little bit of knowledge. For early children, they need hands on, you know? And so that that is a little bit more true of like sixth grade, right? You want to have more hands on learning for them. You can get away with more lecture type, more inquiry based learning when they're at the junior and senior level because of the way that where they're at age wise and cognitively speaking. So that's what what appropriateness is talking about. And then that next bullet is exactly what I was talking about with learning objectives. You have to be able to assess. The only reason we teach things is because we think that they're important, yes, but that we can measure them to help them get better. So we don't want to give them things where their success can't be measured, you know? And there's a lot of leeway with that with rubrics, right? You can measure a lot with a rubric. I can specify like this particular characteristic is necessary in order to get an A or a B or whatever. But if you can't do that, if you can't assess their mastery of a learning objective, then it is not a good learning objective. We have to be able to track and help them be successful, but there has to be a measurement for success. And that's what the assessment is. We assess as a means to collect data so that we can better instruct our students. And we're supposed to be assessing all the time. Domain one, which is the overarching idea. Domain for competency three is about creating instruction for all students. That's appropriate for all students that, you know, adheres to relevant content via the teaks and provides consistent, specific assessments. And and the reason for that is because instruction and assessment, they're cyclical. We we instruct and then I might ask a few questions and that is a formative assessment. Helps me form or drive my instruction. So if I, you know, asked the class to raise up their little red or green cards based on something that I I'm quizzing them about, you know, reflecting on the lesson and I see a sea of red. I know that my instructional method or the communication or something was lost in translation. And that means tomorrow I have to revisit that because that learning objective wasn't achieved. And so we're we're constantly gathering information, data via our assessments. And that includes observations in the class, walking around the classroom when they're in their cooperative learning groups. If I told them to assess the diction of a poem so that they can identify the author's tone and I walk around and I hear everyone totally getting the tone wrong of poems, then I know that I didn't correctly explain what diction is. And that they didn't understand how you collect evidence of diction and sort of try to guess what their tone is. I will know that just from walking around. I don't have to give a quiz, I don't have to do an essay. And that, but for me as a teacher, I would know that's a big deal, a big gap in knowledge for them, for my content area. Something was lost in translation. So the ability to be assessed is so incredibly important. Whenever you're coming up with your learning objectives, you also need to take their background, their needs and interests and the alignment of campus and district goals. You always want to be in line with district and campus goals. You don't want to be out out of line with them, I should say. It's not really important that that's like written into your objectives, right? But you, if you're, if you're, this is a really good real life example. I worked on many campuses from 2003 to 2015. And during that time, there was a very large shift from in 2003, we didn't have internet at all in schools. Like I didn't teach with internet, that wasn't a thing. We didn't submit our grades online, we didn't submit our lesson plans, there was no emails, there was none of that. They had just started with emails, actually. They had like AOL, but anyway. As it became more ubiquitous technology, we had to add more and more and more. There were a lot of teachers that were hesitant, including technology in their classroom. Some of them would literally put on their board, no technology use when their campus goals were BYOD, which is bring your own device to school so you can use it. So that would be in direct conflict of campus goals. And that's like the only thing that I would say to think about when you think about learning. But just don't be in conflict of what the goals are. But the most important things to remember are the ones that I just mentioned before. And specifically their background, needs and interests are very important in order to, it's not necessary per se, like you won't get in trouble if you do, don't include that. But it, but including or that idea and thought process about their background, about their needs and interests into what your learning objectives are. Something that's going on in the news, I'm going to utilize that to try to teach things. I might look like if they're interested in knowing about Ukraine, I might try to find, there are people putting out pieces of poetry right now, today in Ukraine, on Twitter and in newspapers, talking to journalists. So as an English teacher, we could analyze those right now, right as history was happening and sort of discuss how the old poetry, the poetry of slavery, the poetry of the Holocaust, isn't just art or like these things to be studied. It was at a an outburst of emotion at a time of turmoil. So utilizing students' interest gets that buy in. That that's something that is really important and it makes the learning for them more fun. If it is interesting to them, then they're like, my teacher cares and what we're interested in. My teacher tries to make it make sense with the outside world. They get that and they're in it more. So including things like that into your learning objectives. It's not something you'll be punished for if you don't do, but it's what science says is the best way to teach. And this is a theoretical exam. So theoretically, everyone should be doing that. Every single teacher should be creating learning objectives specific per classroom because different students have different needs, different interests. And I'm not saying whole different lessons. I just mean really taking into consideration the humans that they're trying to engage with. And if you really want to do it in a meaningful way, and this exam is theoretical and theoretically, you're supposed to always want to do it in a meaningful way. So by including their background, their needs, their interests into the thought process when you're, you know, evaluating the criteria to create it and even to assess it, the objectives. Taking that into consideration will pay off in spades as far as student participation, their engagement, their like reflected back at you, you know? If you, for instance, a lot, a lot has been done, and I always speak from the English perspective. But as far as making sure that different readings are brought in and it's not just old white men that were reading because their experiences are not shared by the masses and certainly not by any of the populations that I taught. And so it was very important that the students heard, saw themselves in the reading, in the writing that was good, that had experiences that were commensurate to their own. That was very important for the learning, for the buying, for the interest. And it still is today. It's important to see yourself in what you're doing. And if the academic world doesn't at all take you into consideration, it's very difficult to see yourself as belonging or reflected there. Okay, let's go up a little bit more. Use assessments to analyze students' strengths. Evaluate teacher effectiveness and guide instructional planning. So that is the, all those are all the reasons why, and they're all sort of the same reason. So we want to try to identify their their strengths and and their weaknesses. We want to highlight their strengths, try to find ways to utilize their strengths to help other students and to help that as a like a jumping point or as a prior knowledge to build new strengths. And we need to find support for those needs. We also are, in a way, because we need to make changes to our instruction based on their needs, reflecting back on our our effectiveness, or we should be. This is something every single teacher should be doing, reflecting, am I being effective in my lessons? Was I effective after that? How did that class go? I ask myself every single time class was over. It was like a like a show that ended and I had to like revise and edit. Did we meet the mark or do we have to go back? To to evaluate yourself, right? To feel, to assess yourself in a critical manner. But it's not always about like a lack of efficacy on the teacher's part. There are a lot of things at play with whether a student is, students are able to master. You know, maybe that particular instructional strategy that was used didn't work out. Maybe they needed more like a like a physical handout to take with them so that they could refer to it later. And instruction was only given verbally and put on the board while they were learned. Like many things at play, they could, several students be having a bad day. The point is that it is always important to reflect what in this makeup? And you'll be able to know, I could always tell, I knew my students so well, I can tell if something was going on in in their home, if they were not behaving in the way that was indicative of their normal behavior. But you have to take the time to know your students so that you can plan for for their strengths, support their needs and 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 be willing to, I guess, not be so stringent, I should say, or to take their act, their their lives lives into consideration with your planning and and with your interactions with them. I think a lot of that is lost sometimes. Teachers will forget that students, unfortunately, sometimes experience really traumatic situations at home, like situations of abuse, situations of hunger, I mean, things that children really shouldn't. I mean, even death in the family, divorce, a myriad of things. And the thing is, is that it doesn't have to be something that we would designate as particularly traumatizing to be in fact traumatizing to a child. And so that has a lot to do with student performance as well. But taking the time to speak to your students, to understand them, to pay attention, to know them. You can't help support someone if you don't, if you don't know them well. And they won't let you know them if you come off that that feeling from them is getting to know them and incorporating their interests into your lesson planning. Because they're like, oh, she paid attention to what I said. Or she used my homeland of Ambudras in, as an example, in her vocabulary. That was kind of cool. And she even told everyone that was where I'm from, showed all these pretty pictures, like show, highlighted the diversity in the classroom. You make that person feel loved and important. And and I've had some teachers argue with me, say, it's not my job to love a student, it's my job to teach them. I'm sorry, but they're children and it it's your job. They do not always get supportive affirmations from the home. It is our job to find ways to give all of them and build their personal selves too, as as much as they their cognitive selves, you know, through these positive affirmations. We're being paid to do that. To do the opposite would be like child abuse. So I don't even know why anyone would argue for it, but they have. So we we utilize our assessment to drive our instructional planning for the for the individuals and for the groups. And you can also use your understanding of students' strengths and needs when you're planning for your assessments. Giving your students a diverse choice of assessments to be assessed by. Like, let's say you are a health science teacher and you want for the students to be able to show you that they know, you know, root root words and and prefixes. And so you give the students various options. You give them like a project that they can do, like, because you have artists in there. And so maybe they're going to do like different things with prefixes and suffixes there. You give them various ways to show mastery of the learning objective. Maybe you give someone that they can do something with with media, a media, something having, showing that they know that. Few type game situation and test their skills or just take a traditional, you know, test. Give them diverse ways to show you the same information in a diverse way. You know, some people are speakers better than they are readers. I was the type of student that preferred to get essay questions because multiple choice, I I would trick myself and get in my head. But if I could write out the answer from my brain without trickery, then I felt more confident. And so I was always really happy whenever somebody said like, we're having an essay exam, like, oh, my god. Because I knew I could get through that and I I wouldn't be able to, you know, give me a choice of what Hamlet was doing, blah, blah, blah. And you gave me like four choices and now I'm, and now I'm questioning myself. But if you ask me something in an essay, I'll be able to, you know, give it to you. People will learn in different ways and they shine in different ways. And so taking that into consideration when you are planning your assessments is important. Making sure that you're giving a variety of assessments, that you're taking their, the student's strengths and their their sort of learning modalities into consideration while you're also creating those assessments. Reiterating again, the connection between the teaks and the standardized tests. How and how we use standardized tests to see sort of where they are before we get them. You know, so like when you get your students in the beginning of the year, I don't think health science has standardized tests like we do in English, but when I got my seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th graders, I could always before, and everybody, all the teachers are doing it. We're like crazy people, those of us that care about our jobs. But maybe about a week before school started, we would get the our class list. So we'd be able to start looking up names and looking up like, you know, like data, not just about behavior, but really about where they are as far as the academic learning is concerned, as far as the English curriculum is concerned. So we use that in the beginning of the year because at the very beginning of the year, we don't know them well enough to really identify all of their very, very weak spots. But utilizing last year's standardized tests can offer us insight into holistically, this grade level did poorly on, you know, identifying tone in in expository tests or, you know, anatomy. And and that would be a jumping off point for us to start, you know, our reteaching things from last year. So that's what that one's about, see. Okay, E is about you demonstrating knowledge of various types of materials and resources which include technological resources and resources outside of the classroom that may be used to enhance student learning. And that's the important part, like you being able to identify in the scenarios when a teacher is doing this thing, using outside resources or technological resources in order to enhance the needs of of either specific students or varied students, you know, for specific purposes. So maybe I utilized, you know, the video audio technology. And I also had the students, I don't know, utilize an app to create a mini version of the video that I showed them. So that would be me enhancing it, utilizing resources. And you'll see, you'll see evidence of that because sources or technology. So for instance, let's say you're a social studies teacher and you're giving and, you know, you're giving lessons about different cultures and you invite, you know, different community set, cultural community center, you know, directors to come and speak to the classes. That's you enhancing some of, because I know that in in San Antonio, we have like a very large Lebanese community and Jordanian community. And they hold this huge festival that like so many people go to. And there's a huge like German and Polish. And so inviting those community center directors in when you're giving, you know, maybe once, once a week, that would be you utilizing outside sources, thinking outside the box, going outside of just workbooks and handouts and the and the textbook in order to really make a connection between your learning objectives and like the real world. Okay, plans, learning experiences that provide students with developmentally appropriate opportunities to explore content from integrated and varied perspectives. So thematic, you want for them to work cooperatively. Very important, the multicultural learning experiences. Science says that things die when there's not diversity, right? It, we see that replicated in so many different ways. You can look at the, historically speaking, the royal family, you know, they didn't have diversity of bloodline and then they all started dying off and getting very, very, very sick because there was no diversity of DNA. They even now give poop colons because by introducing a different group of bacteria, a diverse group of bacteria into someone's intestine, it stimulates the body to start doing its job. At a diamond or something of the sort. And I, and you're just looking at it in front of you, you only see from that perspective. But somebody else is going to see it from a different perspective, they're standing somewhere else. And that's what we get in learning with cultures. Everybody has a different experience and and might might resonate differently with lessons and ideas and content. And those differences are strengths that could help illustrate the ideas for other students. And so the idea of providing students with multicultural learning experience is really important. Very important for you to identify different cultures that are there within your classroom. That's actually a part of the different domain which you also had weakness in. So I'll just sort of mention it here, but about, excuse me, building a classroom that not only accepts diversity and and cultural indifference, but but recognizes the strength in it and and lodges at something applaudable or something that that we strive to be more diverse, to be able to see things. The more that diverse we are, the more complex our sight as a classroom can be because we can see from different perspectives, all the different pieces of the puzzle. And understanding how important those multicultural experiences. And this is not just talking about who you are, Latina, you know, Nigerian, Chinese. It's also talking about, you know, there's a lot of students. My daughter has, I think, two kids in her class that have same sex parents. And so it's very, you know, that is a part of their culture. You know, gender cultures, language is part of a culture. And so there are several different facets to culture and and understanding the diff, the different variants you have there, the diversity and making sure yes, for sure, certainly have to feel comfortable. you know, yes, for sure, certain they have to feel comfortable. An EL student is not going to practice their speech as a beginner or an intermediate in a classroom where a teacher allows people to laugh at accents. It's not going to happen. The student is going to sit quietly and guess who's not going to practice using academic language in that classroom. The, the management of the classroom man, matters. And um, and it's not just managing it, it's, it's actually carefully crafting a very particular climate that is conducive to learning, that is conducive and accepting, that feels like a community. And I don't know if you were, attended a session before, but there uh have been times where I've gotten in trouble because I haven't started directly into the curriculum on the first week. But because I'm building the relationship with my class, we're getting prepared to do our stuff, learning each other, like really, I learned their names by the first day. Like the next day when they walked in, I said, hi, snazzy Susan. Hey, tough Tom, like whatever they chose for themselves and had on their dialectical journals. We did a project. They, they did a project. We went over like different expectations. We came up with class rules together because that's part of that intrinsic buy-in. If the students feel like they are agents in their own learning, like you, I am an active participant, not just someone who comes and sits in your class and you pour knowledge into me, but an active participant in learning. Um, then they're, they're, they're more engaged in the process. And part of that is, is just explaining to them what the goals are for you, for the classroom. And I would make it feel like a team, like worst house Sada's class, you know, and we have to like, last year we got this percentage. And as a grade level, we got this. But so I made it like, it's us, our little posse against everyone else. And I explained to them what the goals were and then what. And I mean, it depends on what grade level you're teaching. I taught high school for a very, very long time. And so um, they appreciate being active participants in the situation and not just dumped into something that it's like, follow this, follow that, do this, do that. I don't care about your opinions. I've been using these lessons for fifty years. And, and that's not going to equate to the type of learning that we want our students to have. Uh, encourage student application of knowledge and skills to the real world and beyond. Again, just trying all the time to make it useful for them, the, the information and find out what they're interested in is an excellent way of um, you know, bringing in real world experience. But like tying in the real world and inviting people to come in and speak to the class um also brings in real, real world experience. Whenever possible, try to tie it to something that is real world so that they understand that this learning isn't in a vacuum. And, and if you can't tie it to a real world experience, the kids, my son just did it himself, called it out and said, I'll never use this, like when, and I'm like, I tried to think of a reason, but there are some things that we learn that we would just won't use again. And so whenever, whenever possible that we can show them an example of it, we certainly want to take advantage of that. Cause um we do have to learn some things that are, you know, not life or death things. Allocate time appropriately with lessons and units. And so knowing that you, you have a, at the beginning of the classroom where you want to do pre-teaching of academic vocabulary, where you want to do direct instruction, minimal, minimal direct instruction of like new content or review or reteach, because maybe you gave an assessment yesterday and, you know, there was some misconfusion, uh, a miscomprehension. So you want to reteach. So that takes. You want to have ample time for the students to be able to apply, you know, whatever it is that you modeled or whatever new knowledge that they learned within the classroom so that you can assess them right then and there before they leave. So there's a, there's a, a flow to the cycle. And, and it used to be that teachers spent the bulk of their cycle in direct instruction. But, but you certainly don't want to live in direct instruction. The best, most fruitful learning comes when students are making connections with their prior knowledge, with their experiences, with their beliefs, and connecting that to the content, connecting that with other students' ideas, connecting that with the teacher's ideas. And so that type of learning is going to be, you know, more beneficial than a teacher standing at the front of the classroom and directly reading the textbook. And you want to allow opportunities for the students to engage and reflection, to reflect, reflect. Because reflection i- in, in fancy talk is called metacognition. So meta means me and cognition is thinking. And it's just you thinking about your thinking, you reflecting about your thinking. And if you're a, a, a self learner, then, then you do metacognition all the time. You read something and then you think to yourself, did I understand that right? You, you're, you're always questioning yourself. If you don't ever do that, then your metacognition skills might not be super, super high. They are skills that have to be practiced and they're taught. So we have ways in which we um enhance the students' metacognition skills. We ask them, for instance, in ELAR, an easy way for us to do is at the end of each paragraph, we have them sort of like summarize a little bit off to the side what it was about. Because that forces them to think, did I understand that? Oh, I didn't. I can't put it in a little summary. I have to go back and reread it. That activity. Be also for uh, English language learners, because we want for them to sort of like to, to do needs assessments, to reflect on if they understood it or if it was right. And, cause we aren't always going to be assessing and gauging everything. And their assessment of themselves is more valuable, but they're just not inclined to do it. Once we train them, I do it all the time ad nauseam. I think that I might have a problem. I do metacognition too, too much. It's like everything is metacognition with me at this point. I, I'm like, did I understand that right? Let me see if I could do this better. Let me try to do this, understand this more. It's annoying, but, but it's a way for you to teach yourself things, you know, uh, for, to get past it and to reflect on whether or not you understood that. Okay, we are going to end here and then I will be up again at, let me see, today, Thursday at six thirty and I will start with competency floor.
Okay.
All right. Do you have any questions for me?
No, um, I was, you broke it down pretty good for me here.
Excellent.
I think my, yeah, I think my problem with the test is there's always those two answers that always are so similar that I, it, I end up picking the wrong one.
Right. And we'll take a look at some of them uh, in the, in the practice and um, and we'll look at how this just one word and by really putting the, by putting the question in layman's terms, you know, if they say, oh, Miss Alceta wants to increase her critical thinking activities in her English Language Arts class, you know, uh, what would be, which would be the best activity to achieve Miss Alceta's goals? So what are Miss Alceta's goals? They are increased critical thinking in her activities. So the Miss Alceta's goal is increase critical thinking activities. Have identified and put it just in layman's terms, what, what supports the goal that I identified? Which one supports the, the key words and phrases? Because if they give you an age group or a grade level, it's because they're trying to tell you something about their development. Early child is very different from middle child. Middle child boys, if they are sort of slow to develop, they, they have, they suffer from depression. They're, they're less inclined to speak in, in class discussions because their voices haven't changed and they'll speak. So there are like particular reasons why things might happen. And just knowing those certain things, and remember that all of that is in the, the folder. There's that quick sheet and it has just a really good breakdown of domain one and all of those um human growth and development uh theories and, and how we utilize those in order to plan for instruction, plan for activities and implement it.
Okay. I'll go ahead and take a look at that um, once I get off here.
All right. And so I will see you again on Thursday.
Okay, sounds good.
Bye bye. Yes.